We were just talking about going to Utah, that's where you were, right? I've never been, we were just talking, I'm like, you know, I wanna go, just trying to figure if we're gonna go in the winter or the summer, because they're both beautiful. I mean, you know how Facebook listens to you when you talk and you start saying something, all of a sudden it comes up? Obviously, we were talking about, where do you wanna go, we went down like three different sections of Colorado last year, I'm like, let's go to Utah, let's try that. And I literally turned the phone on and your seventy, hundred and seventy-four pictures come up, I was like... How long did you stay there? Seven days? That's what I wanna do, I wanna, oh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go through your forty.
It's called a order. This is gonna be City of Fort Ritchie City Council Meeting, Tuesday, November twenty-third. At this time, I was gonna invite Pastor Lord for our invitation.
Thank you, sir. Lord, at this Thanksgiving season, Lord, we're truly thankful for your goodness to us. Thank you for favor for our city with all the Coote River Landing project. Lord, we just ask for favor with all the walks, lighting, state right of ways. And, Lord, thank you for the ability to financially meet all needs. We do ask for your favor with all the businesses involved. And, Lord, you say, don't know anything but to love them. So, we wanna thank you for our manager and our staff and wisdom, budget, or your counsel and make decisions that honor the Lord. And, Lord, open our eyes this season to help those without. Lord, we want our city to be known as those that care for one another. And, Lord, may our Christmas in the park truly bless those in need. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings that come through our fire and police department. Lord, we continually ask your protection over them, peace in their homes and families. And, Lord, for this Thanksgiving-Christmas season, Lord, we just ask that, Lord, their families would have an abundance and be in peace. And, Lord, tonight, we just, just ask you to continue to minister to Walmart. We pray, Lord, as the police go out, give them wisdom, and we pray for peace over that, Father, and that things would change. And then we just close by asking for wisdom and decisions tonight. And, Lord, just thank you for all of the workers of our city with an abundance during this season. God, can we just give you thanks and ask it in Jesus' name?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Scott Tremblay?
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorel?
Here.
Councilman Tom McClary?
Here.
Councilman Tom Kinsella?
Here.
City Attorney James Mathieu?
Here.
City Manager John Duke?
Here.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve Council minutes.
Motion to approve Council minutes?
Ruth, please.
There are your minutes? I don't think we'll have to approve them.
Then both sets of minutes will be on the next Council meeting.
Why don't we have them listed?
Let's put that on the record, because normally we approve the minutes.
Of course, yes, due to the technical difficulties and everything, it took me a little longer to get them finished in time for this agenda. So, they both will be on there from next, oh, December eighth.
Understood, thank you. This time, we're gonna move on to comments from the general public. At this time, it was a sign-up sheet, but I don't have it. So, I know Pastor Lord was first up, so welcome.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Senator Lord, I pastor, eight-one-one-four, Leo Kid Avenue. Uh, just again, just wanna thank the city, uh, just for their support in the park. I wanna thank Mister, uh, Mister Dudes and the, uh, team there for being able to make that happen, get the permit for, for Christmas in the park. And so, you should have a flyer before you, uh, we're working on that, having some meetings tomorrow. But Saturday, December eleventh, eleven a.m. to two. And, uh, we will have the Christian Motorcycle Association, they helped us out in the Fish Fry, the Fall Festival, and they liked it so much, they wanted to join us again. So, they'll be, be helping that work out. As you can see, we're looking to have food, cookies, music, Christmas carols, story by the CMA of the real Christmas, and gifts for younger children, and prayer and testimony. So, thank you, everybody, for making that happen, it's just a honor to work here in the city. And, uh, just wanna wish everybody a thankful Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas. If I don't get to see you much, I know we'll have another meeting. And I do apologize, I was in the middle of some family matters, I've got a daughter sick up in northern Florida. Looks like I might have to take off in the morning, so if I can be excused, I need to go back, I don't want to run and, and be here. So, Lord bless you and thank you for all you do. I particularly wanna thank you, both chiefs, and just the support and blessing you are, what it is to bring the families out and see the support y'all do, and they just really, really enjoy what you do. And just, just thank you for being a blessing here, okay? Thank all of y'all, Lord bless you, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Lord.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mister Bob Hubbard, welcome, come on up.
My name is Bob Hubbard, seventy-five, fifteen Grand Boulevard. Uh, first of all, I wanna point out, uh, appreciate the fact that the city has worked on the sewer system over there. My neighbors have been bothering me about it, uh, I don't know if there's been any progress, I guess we've got some results from the test that we had. And, uh, my friend Gina at DEP, Fort Ritchie, called me yesterday and talked, told her that, uh, we're work, working on that, the city's working on that, and we're anxiously waiting some results. And hopefully, it'll be positive and it'll solve all the problems. So, we say thanks for taking care of that, hopefully. And I also wanna point out, uh, the words were made about eliminating the city boat ramp, uh, which is a disaster for the city. I know that comments were made, that a lot of the people who use the boat ramp are from the city. I hope that we're not putting money into the landings just for the resins of Fort Ritchie, because the businesses over there open for people outside the city to come visit them. Uh, and if you do eliminate the boat ramp there, people have to go all the way up to Newport Ritchie if there's any access there, if it don't get full, we're gonna subsidize that boat ramp. I mean, if you're concerned about financially maintaining this boat ramp, uh, it can easily be resolved by monetizing it. It's not unusual, some small areas do have, charge people to use the boat ramp. Most communities, counties don't, but if you charge seven dollars, the people will be happy to pay for quick access to the vault. Even a fifty-dollar annual fee for commercial fishermen, to use that boat ramp, that'd be more than enough to subsidize that boat ramp. And it is essential, most of the people who use that boat ramp do use businesses, Sunset Landings, they use, they do go to Whiskey Joe's, and they do go to Booters. So, they don't come here just to go fishing, but they come here for, uh, recreation. And if you're gonna work on the landings, then a boat ramp should be a big part of that, it should not be eliminated. The Sheriff Department uses that ramp, 'cause they have quick access to Gulf of Rescue, which I'm out there, I have a commercial boat, two commercial boats, actually. I see them out there performing rescues, and that boat ramp is essential for them to get to people in a minimal amount of time. Uh, I don't know if they're aware of what you're doing, but pointing, pointing out, you wanna eliminate that for them, I think they might be concerned about that, and they might, might at that time wanna help you out. If not, then you can charge them a monthly or a yearly fee for them to use it, as well as commercial fishermen that don't live in the city. People live in the city, can get a manual permit at a low price, if they're outside the city, then they can pay fifty dollars a year, or they can pay seven dollars for lunch. And that would be more than enough, make a couple thousand all the weekend doing that. I think that would monetize and help maintain the ramp and help the landings as well. So, please take a serious thought into this, because there's no good boat ramps around here, which are going up all the way up the river, and it gets full, as well as ours in Fort Ritchie. And having a commercial boat, uh, having fishing charters, as well as taking hot people up to the island, and it's, it's very important, uh, in this area to have a boat ramp. So, that's basically what I wanted to say, take, take a good, close look at it, before you make a decision to eliminate it, and it's monetizing, people will be happy to pay using that boat ramp. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Hubbard. That's all that's signed up, but, um, the general public, welcome to speak, if there's anyone else, just show a hands. Seeing no hands, we're gonna close, commentary from the general public, we're gonna move on to opening comments from our city manager, welcome, John Duke.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Drive in Canal's twenty-six A and one, we've received no update from Treasury, presuming they're still awaiting documents from the county. Bring up today on the limestone pier, we'll engage the engineer next week, same engineer that did the report, uh, a number of years ago. Our building inspector did inspect the pier, he concurred with the engineer's report, I'll have that written report here back the next, uh, next meeting. He did have recommendations for city staff on how to approve safety at the pier, and so staff are working on that. Working on gathering estimates for technology in the council, so, uh, looking at everything from, you know, just replacing microphones to replacing the, updating the entire A B system. So, we're in the process of that. Coote River Landing, I met with Airs Engineering, uh, we've got some design choices to make, and so I'll be getting with the individuals to, to work through some of those. They did advise that the Duke and F dot discussions are moving forward, haven't hit any major snare so far, so, uh, hopefully that'll come to fruition. Uh, we did discuss phase two, uh, looking at Bayview from Tremblay all the way down to Bridge Street, some of the amenities and improvements that we've evolved. So, they are working on, uh, some of the input that you all had at the last, uh, meeting with them, which side of Old Post, uh, which side of Treadway. So, we've got some, uh, meetings planned on, there's along those, those two roadways, Airs is putting those together. So, once we've got that sorted out, then, uh, we'll be ready to come back there, working on the sculpting for the project. As Mister Hubbard indicated, we did smoke testing, we're awaiting the final, uh, written report from Fort of Rural Water. But just having done the testing, we, staff is aware of places we have, uh, issues to address, and they've started working on that. About twenty-five of the leaks that were found, were found on private property, and so we'll be working with private property owners on, on how to address those. Code Compliance Building Official, Public Works will all be collaborating, uh, if it's adequate to, you know, make a request of a private property owner and they fix it, good. If we have to take other measures, we'll, uh, we have code to address this, so we may have to go that route as well. Staff is working on repairing leaks that were found on city property and their right of ways, ten or eleven of those, I believe. Just so, uh, everybody's aware, SaveAll will be closed Thursday and Friday, we'll have a skeleton crew here tomorrow afternoon, but, uh, maybe minimal, so, you've got city business, uh, and you can come in in the morning, I think that's. And, uh, just a reminder, the CAC is still working on a, all staff barbecue on the tenth of December, eleven to one, and you all are invited, so if you can, please join us. That's all I have, Mister Hubbard, stand for your question.
Thank you, I'm gonna start with, uh, Councilman Kinsella.
None of us, no.
Hi. Nothing here.
Um, regarding those leaks on the private properties, is there a possibility that our grant, some grant we have made, may be able to assist some of those homeowners in those great payouts?
If, if we rewrite the grant and take it through the scary word process, that, that's a possibility. Most of, well, I should say most, some of these are gonna be pretty minimal in cost and, you know, put a cap on it, like, some of them really are that simple. Four-inch pipes sticking out of the ground, uh, blue cap on it, others, if there's a leak underground, it makes sense, so, future pay.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I believe that closes out the comments from the city manager, gonna move on to comments from myself and the council. Um, I'm gonna start back on my left this time, the council in its room.
Well, I had gotten, I had received, um, an email from one of our residents regarding the boat ramp, and unless you guys are talking behind my back, I don't think we're even considering shutting the ramp off. I think the only thing this council that was thinking about doing is thinking about researching and trying to find financial aid through grant systems in order for us to maintain that ramp a little bit better. And as far as I understand it, when they were planning for the Coote River thing, we're not even really discussing shutting the ramp off. And I would like these residents to, you know, feel a little bit more comfortable about the fact that we're not talking about that at this time. And I don't see that happening in the future personally. And that's all I really have to say.
With that, I, I know that the Airs Engineering was putting together, I think, some alternative looks for down there. So, what I'd like to do is, once that comes out with the Airs Engineering options, just put it on, and we'll talk.
I think that's great, we've talked about the, uh, monetizing it several times, the last few years that I've been up here. We just have not been able to come up with, uh, something that's satisfactory to do that. But I don't, I don't think, uh, any of the council in the six years that I've been up here has ever discussed shutting that ramp off completely. So, that rumor needs to be, you know, squelched a little bit, 'cause I don't think they really wanna turn it off for anybody. So, just saying. Thank you.
All set, okay, I don't have anything further.
Um, I know regarding the ramp, you know, there, it was mentioned in passing as an option to shut it down. I think we do have Airs looking at all potential options for it. That being said, it was nothing immediate by any means. Uh, the next park, uh, evaluation, I think, was in phase three, if I recall, which is feasibly minimum four years down the road, uh, depending where we were. So, I know there's a lot of concern, there's nothing imminent that, at least I'm considering at this point, other than seeing what is available to the city. Obviously, I believe it's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, cost to update and upgrade the ramp at this point. And that is what actually spurred the discussions for either monetizing the ramp and/or shutting down the ramps, and if we're not going to pay the three-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, update, upgrade fee. And the county is obviously unwilling to pitch in any money for their, uh, constituents and their residents. I'm not sure exactly why the citizens of Fort Ritchie should supplement a fee or, or a ramp out of their taxpayers, when the county has a heck of a lot more money than we do, and is spending a heck of a lot more money in other ramps throughout the county instead of ours. So, you know, it, it's a little short-sighted of the county, I think, to just threaten us, I believe, at the most recent meeting, that they, we better not shut down the ramp or else, when they do, then go spend one-point-eight million dollars at another ramp in another part of the county. It's a little unfair from that context. But in terms of immediate action, I know there's a lot of concern, uh, among the residents, and both in Pasco County and within the city of shutting down the ramp. But at this time, there, at least as far as I'm aware, there's no immediate, uh, uh, agenda item upcoming. It's more of investigation and seeing what's, uh, available. But if the county were to chip in a significant amount of funds, I'm sure we'd be more than happy to consider it.
Well, with that, if, if they don't, then the issue is, and, and what I was gonna suggest at some point, depending on what Airs Engineering suggests, is just do a survey with all the people that live in the city. Just mail out a survey and let them mail it back, and see what the public says. Because, you know, if the public wants to repurpose that, other than for a boat ramp, and ninety percent of the people that live here say we'd rather have them for something else, then so be it. If, if there's a higher percentage of the people that say we want the boat ramp, then, then so be it, we'll pay our own money and fix it. But, um, you know, I think if we're gonna pay for it, it should be up to our constituents to decide, or give us some direction on what we wanna do. And I think just sending out a survey to everyone that lives in the city, uh, may be the way to go at some point.
Or, we have so much time, it could even be a, a ballot item or something, at some point, I'm sure we're gonna have something coming up where we could look at it. But there's a lot of time between now and then, so, I know the immediate, uh, concern is understandable, but there is still some time.
And along the same line, my concern is, uh, the safety factor involved. Uh, I, I hate for that ramp to become like Fisher Pier, where it gets to the point where it's no longer safe, and we have no choice but to shut it down until the necessary repairs are made. And it's something that we will need help. Me personally, I, I like the ramp there, uh, as we've heard, and it's bringing, uh, a lot of business along, uh, that waterfront, and, and is what's making Fort Ritchie. And I don't like the idea of losing it at the same time. We do have a concern with the, uh, proper maintenance or, or the repairs needed, and, uh, it's gonna be costly, so, we do need help on that one.
Thank you, did you have anything else?
Yeah.
With that, we're gonna...
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I just hope this kind of allays the fears of the people that are living in Fort Ritchie, that we're not talking about doing this in the near future, that we have a long period of time, like, uh, Councilman McClary said. That's not even in the first two phases. Right now, all we're doing is taking care of traffic, lighting, landscaping, parking situations, and trying to lay the foundation for the future. That's why we're in phase one. So, phase two and phase three are several years down the road, and people should, you know, just, just watch for a while and be aware. Come up here if you don't like something, but we'd like to allay your fears for a while.
Now, also, for the citizens of Fort Ritchie, you are also Pasco County residents, so you can contact your local commissioners as well and say...
Absolutely.
You know what, I would like to keep the city of Fort Ritchie boat ramp. Why, Commissioner, are you not helping our city to repair the boat ramp? Now's the perfect opportunity for you to contact your commissioners.
And the only other point that I wanted to make is, it does come as a little bit of a double-edged sword, 'cause we hear the complaints about the boat traffic, the noise, um, and I think a lot of those issues would be remedied if the boat ramp weren't there, in terms of the people that live on the river. And I'm not suggesting that's the right way to go, but it would alleviate some of the issues with our own resources. Our police department's out there all the time, there's people coming and going, uh, drinking, and, and it's crowded, and they're fighting at the boat ramp, because there's so many people trying to get in and out. And, and that's really evening away at our taxpayers, uh, and our resources. And that's, you know, the other thing just to look at, um, that we've been not just maintaining the ramp, but maintaining the area around it and providing social services there, police and fire. I, you know, I know that they're broke down there for various different reasons. And like I said, we hear the complaints all the time about, you know, there's too many boats, they're going too fast, there's too, the music's too loud, and, and obviously, closing that ramp would remedy some of the situation. So, it's a balancing act, and that's why I really, you know, I think at some point, if we're gonna address it, you know, I'd rather just send out a survey and see what everyone thinks within the city. You know, and, and I'm pretty wide open either way, I'm most concerned about what our constituents want. And, um, you know, I'm likely to go with the masses on whatever, when I say the masses, with what, the majority of the people want is probably the direction I'm gonna be, just, you know, but I'd like to know, and, and that's something we just don't know as well. So, that's why I was suggesting a survey potentially in the next year or two, as we're considering what we're gonna do. So, that's all.
I agree, I agree, I just don't want everybody to panic and think we're going to close it next week, you know, and, or, or we're even seriously considering closing it. We're not seriously considering closing it, we're looking at that as only one option out of many. And we're also looking to see if there's any way we can get somebody to help us with the, uh, cost and the cost factor of it. It'd be silly for us not to go out there and get what we could get, you know, to help that out. I mean, you know, so, we're looking at a lot of options, and this is gonna go over the period of time. Like I said, we're only in the first phase, we've got two more phases to go. Next ramp will probably be one of, one of the final things that this council has to rule on. So, that's three or four years down the road, so put your thinking caps on and come up with ideas.
Thank you, at this time, um, I see, um, we're gonna close off the comments, um, from Mayor and Council. I see that there's one hand, Mister Mueller wasn't able to speak in our opening comments to the general public, so I'm gonna allow him to speak now, Mister Mueller, come on up.
Hey, Mueller, five-four-three-nine, Wood. I think it's incumbent upon this council to work with our, uh, work with our county. Couple of weeks ago, and I mentioned it in the last meeting, um, there was a joint session with the city of Newport Ritchie, Fort Ritchie, and the county, to address some of those things. I even mentioned that we still had time to put requests in, if, uh, there was an effort made in a short period of time to get into that. I think you need to look at working with, uh, our county and trying to get that, every year, uh, get that funded. Every year, they refund, or they fund various projects, and it's incumbent upon this council to try to participate in that, and get our concerns, uh, into the, uh, funding pool, so that we can have a view there as well. This week, I went down to that ramp at low tide, and I photographed, uh, all the underpinnings and the piers there, and the majority of the cross-members between the filings, their boards, they've been, uh, wasted away. And, you know, I guess if somebody wanted to, we could put, you know, two-by-sixes and two-by-eights in there and, and fix that. Wouldn't be that difficult, it's a repair. But, uh, it's one of those things, we need to look at maintaining something, once we put it in place, we just don't let it sit there, let it waste away. Time and effort has got to be, uh, considered, and people have to have an assignment to address that. It's just like anything in your house or anything like that. So, somewhere, somebody's dropped the ball, and I'm not pointing fingers in, in this group, but this has gone on for a long time, and I think it's, maybe it's appropriate time to turn the corner, and let's try to extend that effort with the county, and, and try to get back to, uh, a relationship that will help the city, rather than prison on an island, uh, trying to do it ourselves. And we have a history, from what I've seen, you know, of things not being completed on our own. So, with, with that, I would suggest that maybe we oughta, as a council, uh, try to approach, uh, our commissioner, and let's try to work together, rather than try to work apart.
Thank you, Mister Mueller. Anyone else that'd like to speak from the general public? Seeing no hands, we're gonna move on to the next item. Um, there's comments from boards and committees, I didn't see anyone signed up. Mister Rodriguez, come on, welcome.
Excuse me, Linda Rodriguez, five-nine-one-seven, Lynch and Court. I just wanted to remind everybody, not tomorrow, but the week, Wednesday after December first, we're gonna have Meet Your Neighbor. We changed it from monthly to quarterly, so, um, we are going to do it at the Gaudi or at five-thirty. Please, you're all welcome to come, as well as the residents, but that's, it's Meet Your Neighbor, so that we can all get together, so. One down, five-thirty, December first, Lloyd or. Love to see you.
December first.
First to Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, that's all we have, comments from boards and committees. At this time, I'm looking for a motion for a consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we're gonna move on to council business. Our first item is going to be special exception request for five-eight-four-four Pine Hill Road. Um, that request is going to be a quasi-judicial style hearing, um, so I wanted to give a brief introduction, and then, uh, we'll go from there. This particular item is a special zoning matter, um... And it's a special exception. Pursuant to our code, all proposals for special exception is sent to the Board of Adjustment for review and recommendation. As part of our city code and process, the Board of Adjustment holds a public hearing. The Board of Adjustment was instructed to utilize a criteria set forth in the code which is in front of you. You are also required pursuant to the code to utilize a criteria, um, as to whether to uphold or deny the recommendation of the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment decision was to recommend, um, approval with a certain condition. In addition, um, to the conditions that they have approved, we, we could, we could have additional, uh, conditions as well. And I've also printed up, just for your reference, on page, just so we go into the hearing, um, the city recommendations were on page nine, and that was the eighteen, the eighteen part, uh, code. And that was the city's responses, the applicant's responses were on page seventeen. And then I have printed, just for the, uh, council, if I can pass these down, this is what the requirements are for approval, so you have a reference. And then the recommendations for the city, just a brief recommendation is on page six. You guys can see that that was, uh, what I was referring to as approval with, uh, recommended condition. That having been said, procedurally, how we're gonna proceed, uh, there's two parties at this point. There's the city, represented by Tammy Veranna, who I believe is here, welcome council. And, uh, there's the applicant, um, who is represented by Barbara Willhite. Okay, I see you here, welcome. Are there, the next thing I wanna go address, are there any intervening parties? And let me read the definition of an intervening party. In essence, an intervening party is a person who has an interest in the application, which is different than the public at large. Um, is there anyone here that meets that requirement? Okay, come on up to the podium if you... What I was asking is if there's anyone here, um, that wants to be considered as an intervener, which is a person who, who has a special applica- uh, interest in this application. If you're the public at large, you still have your right to speak, but...
Yeah, I...
Okay.
We're just neighbors.
Okay, understood. Okay, very well. The last thing I wanted to address is, um, with our council, is there any reason, anyone that's sitting up here, cannot be fair and impartial in terms of coming to a decision here today? And I'm gonna start with my right with councilmen and councilmen.
Do I have any interest?
No conflicts. No conflicts.
Okay. That having been said, procedurally, what's gonna happen is, uh, we're gonna call on the city to put on, uh, evidence first, and we're gonna go through all the evidentiary portion first, and then, after that, the general public will be able to speak. Then the council will, will discuss what we're gonna do, potentially a motion, it's an action item. The general public will be able to speak again, and then after that, uh, there is potentially gonna be a vote. So with that, I wanna introduce Tammy Veranna and invite her to put on the city's case.
Cross examination.
Yep. And, and there'll be cross examination between each, each party, so the parties will be able to cross examine. In other words, the applicant will be able to cross examine the city, um, the council will be able to ask questions as well, and that's up each party.
Did you need to be sworn in?
Yes, so if you guys, I was gonna swear again, and she came up, grabbed the part to it.
Oh, oh.
So, anyone who's gonna give testimony, please stand and be sworn in.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you give at this hearing is the truth?
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. Is this on? No. There we go. Okay, now is it on, great, I'm terrible with technology. Okay, so, good evening, my name is Tammy Veranna with Verona Consulting, and I am representing, um, your city as your city planner. So, tonight, let's see if I can get you to the list directly. Tonight, um, this, this case concerns the property of five eight four four Pine Hill Road, which is located on the south side of the Pine Hill Road, four hundred and ten feet east of Washington Street. Um, this application is for a special exception in the R two zoning district to allow a school, a school use, either public or private, in the R two, two family zoning district, as provided in the city code, section one two seven dash four nine. Um, the property is eleven point zero three acres, um, and, uh, continue that the request is for the enrollment of a base level of students of two hundred and seventy students, and a maximum of four hundred and fifty six students. So, the existing use of the site is a church, uh, that's been there for some years, tr- uh, the church is known as Unity Truth Center. And I would like to say that the, um, the applicant and the owner is Unity, uh, Truth Center, and then the applicant's agents are here tonight, so we'll speak later. So, on the property is a building, uh, there's a, a large canopy, there's a detached unfinished garage, there are assorted paving, paved areas for dry aisles and parking, a gazebo, there's a concrete sidewalk that's on site, and at the back of the site, there's a wetland that connects to the larger wetland system in the city. Uh, in the past, uh, the property has been used in a secondary capacity as a charter school, uh, as, as recently as over the summer, I believe, the, the charter school was there located and located in a location in Pasco County. Um, there is no site development changes proposed as part of this, it's strictly related to the use in the R two zoning district. So, as part of the, um, contacts evaluation, we looked at the surrounding properties. Uh, surrounding properties include residential, including an assisted living facility across the street, and then there's also a number of industrial type warehouse facilities. Uh, this shows the zoning districts around it in, in contrast or comparison to the existing R two on the site. So, you can see, it's a mixture of, you know, R two, R three, uh, there's a lot of C three to the north and to the east, and then there's the land development, uh, to the south, and then there's some agricultural, which is the wetland system to the southeast. Okay, so, what we've looked at were the, uh, criteria that's within the city's code, and there are eighteen different criteria to, uh, that we evaluated. Uh, in all cases, the site, uh, met the requirements of the land development code with a few exceptions, and those predominantly related to traffic related, um, you know, situation issues and how they might impact the adjacent street. So, we looked at, this is a very rudimentary traffic analysis, there is no traffic count data for Pine Hill Road, um, and, and there's some count data for Washington Street, which is, is very age. Uh, but what we did was we looked at the, um, I T E type generation statistics, that is, the, the standard, um, data source for traffic engineers, and we looked at private school K through twelve, um, for two different scenarios. One would be the two hundred and seventy student base, or that minimum, um, or not minimum, just the base, and then the four hundred and fifty six, six, six students, which would be the maximum. So, the total daily trips are shown there, we, we have six hundred and sixty, six hundred and seventy total daily trips at two hundred and seventy students, and then eleven hundred and thirty one at the four hundred and fifty six students. Um, as you would expect with a school, uh, the, the, the greatest amount of traffic would be generated or would arrive at the site in the morning, so that, that's the peak hour between seven and nine, and that's what traffic engineers use to assess impacts onto a roadway network. So, that just gives you a sense of scale. Uh, as you can see, this is the roadway network, uh, around the subject site, the, the roads are, are two lanes, they're pretty narrow on Pine Hill Road. You know, you've got open drainage on both sides of the street, you know, narrow travel lanes, so there's not a lot of room for anything to be stacking out onto the street, so, um... So, this is just some pictures, this is a sub- subject property, uh, looking to the east on Pine Hill Road, that will be to the south. This is looking in the other direction with property, uh, to the south on the left. And this is just, uh, different, uh, vantage points right in front of the property, so you can see the narrowness of Pine Hill Road. So, we, we took into consideration the, um, the city's criteria within the land development code. Uh, we also talked to staff regarding any past operational issues at the school. It's been, uh, uh, the school's been operating on the site for some number of years, there was a lack of data, um, records and things for us to really kind of patch together history, um, but what we did show was that the, the latest school, their enrollment was at two hundred and seventy. So, there was some, uh, anecdotal evidence of, or stories about, um, some congestion occasionally, some backing up onto Pine Hill Road that, um, that caused temporary delays during the Board of Adjustment meeting on November second. We had members of the public came forward and, and expressed those, those same things. So, um, what we have proposed is that, first of all, the, the site, in addition to what we're doing tonight, that any sort of changes or anything that's the site, uh, operation, the site, use of the site has to meet all applicable, uh, codes and laws, that we propose that the enrollment would be, uh, set at two hundred and seventy students, and any increase in that number of students would have to be supported by, uh, a professional traffic analysis that shows that the, uh, the traffic, the street network would not be impacted. And this is a summary, you have more detailed, um, statements of, of what the conditions are in your packet. Uh, negative off-site traffic impacts must be corrected, so if anything, even at two hundred and seventy students, if there are problems that exist, um, then that's something that needs to be brought into, uh, corrected, needs to be corrected, um, immediately. Uh, there must be at least two functional driveways for ingress and egress, so what's existing at the site now cannot be changed. It can be changed in location, but we still need to have those two, uh, points. A clear site triangle must be maintained in front of the site at all times, there is some overgrowth now, but that would be expected during the summer growing season and, and, um, perhaps some people not being on the site during that time. Access lanes and internal circulation widths and clearance should be a minimum of fifteen feet, and that was at the request of the Fire Department. Um, because there are adjacent residential uses enabling the assisted living facility, uh, the, the condition states that extor- exterior lighting must be harmonious with the character of the existing neighborhood, so nothing that shines directly into another property can be trespass. On an annual basis, the applicant, oh, the applicant, the owner, operator would need to come to the city and provide evidence that life safety requirements have been met, um, and that projected permitted student enrollments, um, with evidence of that for that particular year. So, that way we can track over time, um, that you're at two seventy and not going above. And then any proposed operation of the school, um, is applicable, is, is subject to applicable policies, standards and requirements, if any, from the Pasco County School District. So, let's see, there's something I wonder if this thing here can... Yes, that's, that's it, so, um, staff does recommend approval of this special exception request in the R two zoning district, finding that the request is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan and the requirements of the land development code. With that, if you have any questions for me, if not, I will sit down and the applicant or sheriff can, can expand upon my presentation.
What I was gonna do is allow cross examination.
Oh, definitely.
So, other, before I go any further, um, does the applicant have any questions for the city? Okay.
Thank you. You can't have shit to say.
I gotcha, so...
You bring the applicant up, if you're gonna do the applicant first, we're cross examination, have the applicant identify themselves.
Barbara Willhite, sixty three twenty seven Grand Boulevard, for the applicant. Have no questions for city staff, that was a very thorough presentation.
Okay, thank you, and before, um... Before, before we go any further, uh, Ms. Veranna, if you come on back up, I wanted to know if the council had any cross examination questions for them.
Not at this time. I have one question, we established the, um, the limit at two hundred and seventy, or not to exceed is, as part of the recommendation. And you may have said this, but I, I miss it if you did, uh, there was a previous charter school there, there was complaints around traffic on the previous charter school that was causing those. What was the occupancy of the previ- uh, estimated occupancy of the previous charter?
I, I cannot say that it was associated with the school that was there. There was a recollection that over, probably the course of a decade with different schools, that there have been congestion, um, you know, traffic tie-ups and congestion with the school dropping off and running, but, um, I can't pinpoint in time that the two hundred and seventy was what created the problem.
So, what established the two hundred and seventy as the magic number?
That was the number of students that was at the charter school that they gave it over the summer. That was the, a- and the school had shown, there were some records from, I believe, um, I don't know if it was from the state side or whatnot, but there had been higher student enrollment numbers on that site in the past. So, two seventy just seemed like, well, that was what was there recently. Um, the applicant does have aspirations to go higher, perhaps, at some point in the future, but we would start with that sort of comfort level of two hundred and seventy, because that was what was operating on the site most recently. Um, so, it was, that's when the number came up.
But we don't know if the complaints, um, the traffic backup was associated with the two seventy or prior to the two seventy, i.e. more.
Right.
So, we could have essentially approved two seventy and theoretically then be causing a traffic backup. You can't tell me that there's no traffic problems at two seventy?
No, I cannot, so, I, I mean, they have a sufficient enough amount of space on that site for staffing and circulation, you know, so I think that anything that would prevent cars from quickly exiting Pine Hill Road and getting into the site could be remedied very quickly, if, uh, you know, and, and I'm sure that the new applicant is... Oh, there you go. Um, I, we heard from her last time, so she's operated, she's experienced in this, and so she has a sense of, like, a whole practice, she can tell you about this herself, kind of process for making sure that, um, drop offs and pickups are very efficient and quick, and that there isn't tie-ups on this, on the road network. But, but I can tell you that, you know, I, I did go out and observe, you know, just kind of watching to see what traffic is like out there, and there wasn't, um, you know, I would think that the level of service on Pine Hill Road is very good now. Granted, there may be, um, certain times of things being tied up at the intersection of Washington Street, and maybe things stuck on the back. You, you guys probably know better than I do, but I did go out on traffic count, just observation, and it felt as though it was pretty free flow, um, dirt lane, so...
Has there been any type of engineering assessment on queuing at the school or queue lanes through the school?
No, so, the idea was that if you could take that, what was, what has been operating, at least that minimum of two hundred and seventy, what has been operating out there and just continue that forward, so that the applicant can get into the school...
Well, you couldn't tell me that it wasn't causing traffic problems?
Well, we don't have any data to support that, so we would have to do a traffic analysis to understand that.
But we knew there was a traffic problem there at some point in the past.
We knew that there were incidences of not, not an everyday occurrence of traffic problems.
So, it wasn't an every, every, everyday thing, it was an occasional?
It was an occ- my understanding, it was an occasional situation that was observed, and I think that the, the police department had been called to, uh, respond to, you know, or they had served...
The police department's been called?
Well, I mean, it's traffic, so it's a traffic threatening issue, so if somebody wanted to say, I, and maybe, I don't know, if you were here at the time, I know that...
We're dragging him into this?
No, I wasn't here, but Captain Koch wasn't, that's what I'm saying. I remember saying, uh, being, my issues were addressed by the applicant, which, uh, gave that, um, she was staggered, um, egress and egress, so that there wouldn't be that backup plus more efficient use of the space that's available in front of the building, so we'd have a mission to cover.
There's not, and applicant can speak to this in greater detail, but, but detail, but there would be a, a spread back, spread out period of time, I wish the students would be dropped off, um, you could come early for pre-school type of, you know, like, before school activities, and, and then there were, um, just lots of staffing, everybody was working, and I don't wanna still hurt under, but that's what I heard in the last meeting, so... Uh, it sounded as though there was a, a program for making sure that, and as I said before, I did look at, uh, some traffic studies for schools and some other locations... I did look at some traffic studies for schools at some other locations and they were discussing like a four-foot per student stacking distance on site and it's, it's a love maker site, so it is quite large. So I would think that they'd have a lot of, and I don't know if you've seen schools, like operating public schools, you know, they have this fully organized, you know, elaborate making and making sure that everybody has a place to queue and a place to like get their kids and then they can exit backup. Hopefully this will, I have some.
Actually, that was exactly my question, was the problem about inadequate on-site queuing space for inbound vehicles. So I think we can address it.
I think that's all the questions that we have. So what I wanted to do is close the evidences that relates to the city and invite the applicant now.
Good, you're gonna bring in the, if you happen to speak, I'm sorry.
All right. So, Barbara Wallhide, welcome.
Thank you. Barbara Wallhide, sixty-three twenty-seven Grand Boulevard for the applicant. I would just add to what the city staff said before I let my client out that this property has had a school on it for, based on the staff's report, ten years, four different schools. But my client wanted to do something different than those four schools, those four schools never operated with the required special exception. So she could have blocked the property, turned on lights, maybe done what the last four schools did, but she wanted to come and work with the city and so start off on the right foot. And so you have the ability to put conditions and your staff, and your staff's come up with those conditions and your VOA added another condition that we agreed to. And specifically the condition is, two of them, one is that up until two seventy, at any time, you have to correct any issue. And we did meet with your staff, including your, your staff and your, your police, police department, and, and they talked to my client about how she was gonna operate the school and they felt comfortable that what they heard, that she could operate the school, the amount of queuing that we have on site and her experience. And then again, you saw the condition if she doesn't. Unlike the other four schools that didn't have this kind of structure and didn't have the meetings and didn't do all of this work, we did that work and we have a clear condition that says we'll have to correct it. And there's, nobody wants to avoid queuing and queuing into the road more than my client, but she wants her school to operate, for some people to be able to get their, their kids and not be held up in traffic. So with that, I would like to bring her up so she can tell you her thoughts on how she's gonna handle traffic because it's important to her just like it's important to you. Thank you.
Magarita Jimenez, nine oh one Country Club, Prado, Corriente de Sforro. I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I stood outside for a couple of times when they were doing their entry and their exit and I saw a couple of things that could have been done differently, that would eliminate any kind of traffic. Like there's so much land there opposed to the school that I run. I run another school in Hialeah which goes from K through twelve. This school, I don't plan to have a high school, it'll primarily be elementary, maybe middle, which is my plan, but there's so much land, there's so much parking, there's eighty parking spaces and there's a lot of area that was not being used, that was blocked off by fencing and playground equipment, that actually impeded for the cars to go in and be able to do two lanes at the same time. So other than staggered coming in and going out, there isn't a school that will, you know, release their students at the same time. So we have staggered pickups and drop-offs. I don't know if you have any other questions? I mean, when we do dismissal and we're in a major city, traffic, Hialeah, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's huge and there's a lot of traffic and we get our dismissal done in less than twenty minutes. And we have more students at two hundred and seventy. So if we can do it there, we can definitely do it at this site.
I think I'm gonna open up questions. As it relates to that testimony first from Tammy Veranna, if you can just come on up, if you had any questions for. Yeah, just.
I have, I do not have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Come on back up.
Okay.
And any questions by council?
Yeah, one. Um, you, you had mentioned that you were making some adjustments to the site plan, but your proposal says no site plan adjustments?
Well, it's not an adjustment, it's just basically how they were letting the cars in.
Oh.
It's not that I'm physically going to do something.
Okay.
Because when I saw their dismissal, I think they had one security in the front and there was not a single staff member outside. And the way I do dismissal, it's walkie-talkie, staff members outside by groups with their grade and, and we, you know, it's like this. So I just saw it was a little bit lax in the way they did their dismissal.
Let me ask another question. If we were to put a requirement that the dismissal plan be reviewed by the board, just for confirmation?
That's fine. Yeah, they can look at it. Maybe they can even give me more ideas, I mean, that's fine.
Just so we have that communication and that continuity?
Yeah.
Um, maybe that's, that's a good.
Yeah, they can look at it, give me an idea.
It's fine. She can still.
I'm good.
Okay, so was, thank you very much for your testimony. I think that's all the questions we had, but I wanted to invite Barbara Wallhide, if she had any further testimony or evidence that she wanted to present.
That's correct. Of course, you want to address some of these.
Barbara Wallhide, and that condition is acceptable and very good idea.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Wallhide, is there anything else you'd like to present? Okay. With that, I think that brings us to the close of the evidence. So what I'm gonna do is open it for general public commentary before we address any of these issues as council. Anyone who would like to speak at this time? I didn't see a sign of you, but just by raise, there's a show of hands. Mr. Mueller, come on up.
Dave Mueller, five four three nine blue one red. As I recall, I think we own a device that can count traffic if I'm not mistaken. Maybe that could be placed there or, you know, should be in service seven by twenty-four, three hundred and sixty-five days a year to figure out what's going on, where traffic problems are, since we've got equipment. Makes sense to not let it sit idle. Maybe we could sit it there and give you guys some information. That's, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. With that, were there any other folks in the general public that would like to speak? A show of hands? Welcome, come on up. Please state your name and just your address for the record.
Yes, could you? My name is Janet Applefield, I live at twenty-seven ninety-four Forest Drive in Clearwater, however, I'm one of the owners of Apple Six Commercial Center, which is directly across the street from the school. My only concern, we addressed some of our issues at the Board of Adjustment meeting, but the one concern that we had with prior schools, and I think it's been added as one of the conditions, was many parents were parking in our parking lot across the street. So we were having traffic, you know, kids walking across the street. So we wanted to make sure that that was not gonna happen anymore because we're concerned about the safety of, of the kids. And also, there is sometimes a traffic problem on that street, but my concern for that was for our tenants in our, in our warehouse not being able to get in and out and also the nursing home, which is right across the street next to us in case there was ever an emergency with them. But it sounds like they're, they've got handled on their traffic, but like I said, I was concerned about the people walking across the street without a crosswalk. But I think the applicant had said she might have a, some staff person outside in the street to block the direct traffic and to make sure that that doesn't happen. So just wanted to make sure that that gets included with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other folks that wanted to speak from the general public? Seeing no hands, we're gonna close off commentary from the general public at this point and we're gonna open up discussion at this point with council for discussion and/or any motions.
I'm satisfied, Tammy.
I, I think that the recommendations from the Board of Adjustments were, were adequate and I'm comfortable with the way that it sits. And then Mr. McClary, I think, or Councilman McClary suggested that there should be some follow-up through the police department. I have no problem baking that in with the, the other conditions. So I'm comfortable with the recommendations as they sit.
Uncomfortable as well.
So I'm looking for a motion at this point, it's an action item.
Motion to approve special exception used to land development code section one point seven dash forty-nine.
Second. And to clarify, that motion is to approve with the conditions?
With the conditions, yes.
Without Mr. McClary's conditions, is that what you're saying?
Including Mr. McClary's conditions.
Including them.
Yeah, so you, just if we can clean this up a little bit.
Okay.
I presume this is a motion to approve the recommendation, which already has all of those conditions.
All those plus mine.
Plus one additional proviso, is your motion, right? Ms. Wallhide, if you could come up for a second. In number four, it says any negative impact to off-site traffic flow, safety or control or result of school operation shall be corrected by the school or the object, subject to improvement by the city manager, committee and/or police input, is that what you're looking for in this prior to moving the motion?
I was actually looking for a separate review of their queuing and loading plans for review by the police prior to operation.
Is that acceptable?
That's a good point.
So you go queuing and what is?
Uh, they call it loading and, well, loading, unloading plan and a queuing plan, I think is the proper terminology.
Now, is this at any time or is this above the two seventy?
This is for the two seventy.
To go, to go above two seventy?
No, no.
Four two seven.
Four two seven.
For now, okay.
Basically tomorrow they have to.
A loading and, is a parking, whatever?
Loading, unloading and queuing.
It's my understanding if they wanted to go above two seventy, they'd have to come back before.
They have to come back before.
It has to be approved by, approved by staff or?
Anything above two seventy has to, I thought, has to come back before.
Two seventy requires.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two se-, above two seventy requires a traffic analysis if you're sitting with the staff.
Below two seventy just has to be approved by that.
Okay, so below two seventy, just, okay, so. So you want to make that as a proviso right now for the effect?
Yes.
Loading and unloading plan, accept, acceptable.
Loading and unloading.
To PD, right? That's your motion?
That, well, that's her, that'll be good.
Thank you.
Barbara, have you anything to say?
Uh, that's good enough, we, we have the record, I'll work the exact, I'll, if you have a question, we'll move it by please.
Okay, with the recommendation and proviso with queuing plan.
Right.
To be reviewed by police.
So we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. What we're gonna do before we vote, this item needs to be opened up again to the general public now that we have an action item, a motion, a second. Anyone who wants to speak before we vote, please raise your hands. Seeing no one from the general public, we're gonna close off commentary and we're gonna put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And that brings us to item three. And I'm gonna give just a couple moments for some folks that are probably around here. Could be a moment to pick up. What's that?
No, everybody wants to go.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We're gonna now move on to item three, which is the selection of a vice mayor in discussion on a nominating process, appoint a city council member. So it looks like there's two separate action items. We're gonna start with the selection of vice mayor, start there and I'm gonna pass that to Mr., you know, Matthew, or Mr. Matthew for introductions.
You can hear me right? It's two matters, you can give it whatever order you want. The first one will be for the selection of a vice mayor. Very little rules in our code about that, you know, it's nomination, you don't need a second to decide how you want to do it, the mayor, the economic nomination, so you do that first or second. So if you're gonna do that first, how about we just do that first and I can explain some of the details of the next one?
Sure, so at this time, we're gonna start with the selection of a vice mayor and I'm gonna open up for discussion and/or our nominations.
I'd like to make a recommendation or make a motion as vice mayor. Jenny Sorrell, if she's interested.
I've had to think about this pretty seriously and I'm gonna have to pass like I passed the last time that I was asked to be vice mayor. I have obligations that I just don't think that I could fulfill that well.
So we're looking for a different nomination and I was gonna see if you had any, any input?
Look, we only got two other options.
I nominate Tom Canel.
What's the term?
Intel, intel from.
Can I, can I just say the, the vice mayor's duty is solely, if something happens to the general public, right, he's not, he's not, I won't let. So he has sort of an emergency meeting he could take or he got sick or something.
But just to clarify, after, it looks like we have an election period coming up. Once that election period closes, we will re-address the vice mayor issue, right?
Yeah.
It's a four-month time.
Right, so, okay.
It's a one-year term.
So it's gonna be through?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're correct, that'll, this will end in April, I guess. It'll end in April unless we fit in a special election in support, and by the way, I had to get off track, sent me email yesterday, I believe it was John, and he's still working with the state, the lawyer for the supervisor elections, determining if we have enough time to do it. They can't do it in the brief yet, like it would for the state house and, you know, Capitolium days and things like that, so I'll get you that information, it's been read out to you. So yes, it would be until the latest April, but if we stuck a special election in February, it might be soon. Give you an exact answer.
Okay. Before we put it to a vote, we have a nomination. I wanted the general public to be able to speak on this issue, so I'd like to open it to the general public if there's any questions, commentary. A show of hands, would anyone like to speak on this item before we vote? Seeing no hands at this time, we have a nomination, is there any other reason for any discussion amongst council? Put it to a vote?
Second.
So we have a nomination, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, thank you for serving as vice mayor and, and working. With that, there's a second part of this item, which we bifurcated it, but the second part was the nominating process or selection process to appoint a city council member and was gonna pass that to our city attorney.
There is, once again, very little guidance how, how to do this. Let me just read to you exactly what our guidance is, if there are more than forty-five days remaining and a vacated council seat, so the next regularly scheduled city election, which is the case, council nominate qualified city residents, okay? So we're gonna discuss how you wanna do that. And by a majority vote of the remaining council members, we can be in four of you, choose one of the nominees until the special election is called to fill the vacant, once ever called, they'll serve till April. So what you need to decide is, well, how do you wanna do those nominations? How do you wanna find these people? Do you wanna put in something on the, on the webpage? Do you, do you wanna, how, how do you wanna solicit these people? And then the second decision you wanna make is after you've solicited these people, how much time do you wanna do it, you know, at the next scheduled council meeting? And if so, how are you gonna do that? In other words, so can each one of you nominate with one person? Okay, I'm just throwing these out for ideas for you, any way you want, can you nominate one, one peak person? So let's say, Teddy nominates one person and you could nominate here, okay, you nominate one, you nominate. Okay, you nominate one, you nominate two or something, then, then how do you vote? You score them? Do you want to do it that way? So you have four people sitting out there that have been nominated. Do you score them, four, three, two, one, and then add up the scores? Or do you want to do it some other way? Does that make sense?
We've done this before here and not too far.
You can do it any way you want.
If I recall, the last time we did this, we had, we said it, we advertised it to the general public. I think the general public were able to come and speak about their qualifications, which is, in my mind, the most important thing is make sure they're qualified. You have to have the clean background, residency requirements, et cetera. And then obviously, when they talk about those things, they'll talk a little bit about their background. Let us know kind of what their interest is and how they have the ability to help serve. So, you know, I liked that idea for the process in terms of having people come in and give them time to speak. In terms of whether we want to nominate multiple people and have some point system, or if we want to have a motion, a second, and, and vote. I'm open to either suggestion on that issue. So the first issue, are you guys comfortable just bringing everybody in and advertising it and letting them open it to the public that way?
I like the idea of advertising and have the, those that are interested respond to the city, to. City manager or whomever. And let them show their interest and go from there, making sure that they are qualified before we fight them.
I think we were actually required them to speak last time.
Right. But if they're not qualified, there's, there's no sense to have them speak. That, that's what I'm saying is that let them up. I don't want to use.
You want them vetted before they even speak.
Correct.
Yes.
The qualification, I believe, for council members only to be a resident and a long.
Yeah, yeah, let me.
So qualification is very.
Yeah, the qualification is the same as running for office, which means you have to live in the city for previous twelve months and not be a convicted felon. And that's still an open issue right now, but that is the rule here until the, the contingency rules change. That's it. Someone's testing that now unless you've got, unless they have a contingency order. So you haven't just got to live here for a while. So that, that's qualified. I think what you meant was more than that, right? It's qualified to sit here. Someone that it would be appropriate.
Making sure that they are qualified, such as.
Such as that, yeah.
And then once they're vetted, then we'll have them come in and.
I, I like that idea.
Okay, so there's a two-step process that you'd like to see, a paper application into the city, which is vetted for those requirements. And then once they've passed those, we'll have a meeting where they all have their, their time to speak.
That's my idea.
I think that's only an idea.
It's fine. I'll do it then.
Let me make sure that.
So, so timeframe, so timeframe, what are we thinking, two weeks to apply and be vetted and then two weeks later to come in? So you're talking about a month out?
Actually, that'll kick it up. Please don't forget, um, this is.
Kicking to the new year.
The agenda, we're probably, we're probably looking at the new year for that.
Or would you like to do one week and one week and do it at the next? Kind of timeframe would you like?
We do have three weeks.
So we have two weeks for the application. So we can apply, have them apply, have them vetted in the next three weeks and then have here at the next week.
I'll keep saying that, vetted. I'm not in control of figuring what you're talking about.
They just have to confirm their residence.
Because I think about thirty seconds, it's twelve months. I think about half a second, right?
And then are we going to do a background check to make sure they're not convicted felon's up or something?
They just need to be able to sign an affidavit before they sit down here and get sworn in.
You can't do more.
The way that works is they lie about that.
You don't like it.
So we take them on their word. But we, we could run the check if they want to get set, but generally that's not a free process.
Okay. So.
I like that idea.
All right, so we'll, we'll put it on for the next, we'll advertise it, put it on for the next meeting. And then at the next meeting, when we, when everyone speaks, do you guys want to be able to nominate multiple people? Or you want to be able to nominate someone and then if there's a second and we vote? How, how do you guys want to approach that?
I think the last time that it happened was everyone spoke and then we, you know, the council sat up here and they nominated the one person they liked out of the group. Hopefully there was some alignment. And then it went from there. Because once one person nominates and the second person seconds, then it's a full motion.
Correct. And I like that idea because obviously if there's someone that's, that nominates and there's no second, they're, they're not going to get voted in anyway. So that makes sense to me.
Well, let me take you to the five point of that. We have five people speaking. Okay, and when they're all done, somebody says, "I nominate number one," and let somebody else second it. Are you going to vote then? Are you going to vote for each person?
Yeah, it would vote then because if, I mean theoretically, let's say the two people don't like it, then they nominate, you know, the vote dies. Then you go on to the.
Well, that's up, that's up to you. I mean.
But I think there'd be a, a point of discussion before, before there's a motion to.
And you can do it any way you want. And believe me, you can do it any way you want.
Because what I'd like to do is hear from whoever's going to be up there, have a discussion period, and then once our discussion period closes, then entertain any motions. But I think with the discussion, we'll be able to ferret out kind of what we're at.
Because always, because in the discussion, you can always withdraw a motion to. It's public discussion.
Yeah, you can do it any way you want. Believe me, if you want to do it that way, you could work through it. I'm just trying to make it easier for that day, you know? And what you want to do, whatever you, you know?
The worst that can happen is no one gets elected. I was part of that too.
Yeah, yeah, no, they, they, believe me, any way you want. Just so it's clean here. I don't want any, you know, disagreement, how are you going to do it next time? Just trying to make that easier. So if you're comfortable with that, I'm probably.
Councilwoman Sorel, do you have any input on that issue?
I think that's just, I think that's the only way we can do it. I'm not expecting an onslaught of ten or fifteen people that's going to want to sit up here on the council, so I don't think it's going to be that complicated. I think we're going to have probably, I would think, maybe three, four possible nominees. And I think it would be just as easy to do it that way to be able to clean and make peace. Because if nobody seconds it, there's no vote, it's dead, we move on to the next one.
And there can be no particular order. The folk can speak, you know, say there's five people. One through five speak and, and someone may nominate or motion for speaker number four. And if there's a second, then the vote.
Exactly.
Correct.
Plain and easy, the person that comes up here is going to want to sit up here next to me.
And, and you can always change it that day. If you decide you want to do it some other way, you can change anything you want.
As long as there's a discussion period before a nomination.
Yeah, that's, it's, you know, right.
That's, that's the only thing that I was asking, so we can have a, some kind of discussion.
So we're discussing before we nominate or do we wait to?
They come up, they tell us what they want to do, we discuss it, then we nominate.
And then we'll open it to the public.
Then we second or don't second, then we vote.
But if there's a first and a second, I'm going to open it to the public for any commentary and then we'll.
But you're going to do that process after the first nomination?
No, no, all four of them. Oh, oh, I see.
See a problem?
No, yeah, I s- I.
The, the problem with that is jump, everybody's going to want to be the first one to nominate someone. You've got to remember, if it goes into a two-two, you, you can see how that could become problematic.
They're all four going to come up and speak.
When they're all done speaking, right? One, two, three, four. Trust me, someone's going to want, I want to make the first nomination. Let's, because you're going to vote on it before you even get to nominating. Normally all nominations are done first. And then you, then you vote.
Yeah, I kind of like that.
And then you rank them. Do you understand me? Because see, if you don't rank them, one person may feel real strong about this person and put this person as number four. Yeah, because they're intermediate. It's up to you. I mean, that's.
So they're going to go, come up and speak and we're going, okay?
Well, they're all, let's say four people will, that's, four people will speak. Okay? And so the issue is someone will nominate them and they'll need a second. Now, we, before you vote, do you, will there be other nominations up there? That's generally how you do a vote.
They all speak, we go right down the line, each one nominates one person. Hopefully we don't all nominate a different person, but let's say, let's say you nominate candidate one, you nominate candidate two, I nominate candidate one, and he nominates candidate one. Guess who's going to win? Candidate one, motion second, over.
Maybe.
Now, if you do one, you do two, you do three, and I do four, then we're going to have a discussion and figure out what the hell we're going to do. But.
But if we don't, the thing is, I don't want a point system because I want at least three of us to agree on somebody.
Well, yeah, so just run through a nomination real quick. You have an opportunity to nominate, you have an op- we all have an opportunity to nominate. That at least will, one, it'll either whittle down the list of candidates right away to one or two. And then we can have the discussion and then we can have the nomination.
Right. If two people want the same person, it could be a deadlock thing, but you're right, it will whittle it down and get separated.
Yeah, and then at least it gets down to two.
Right.
If three want one candidate right away, then it's a lock. There's very little discussion at that point. Just nominate and go.
No, I'm fine with that.
So we'll talk, we each nominate one, and then see where those.
In addition to the advertising, we could post it on the front of City Walties to make it. And anywhere else, can he has, anywhere else he wants to advertise it on the police?
Website.
Website, wherever he wants. Thank you. I have nothing.
So this, the second part was not an action item, so we're going to close that at this point. Move on to item four, which is consideration of collective bargaining unit contract. And I believe this is also going to be Mr. Matthew. If I can pass it over to you.
Well, I'll take that, yes. This is the PBA contract. It's the two percent raise, one year, all of the provisions remain the same that they signed up already. Just approving the contract.
Motion to approve FYI twenty-one, twenty-two contract agreement with PBA.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Correct.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item five. This is going to be the consideration to add Flora Rural Water Association and Master Consulting Engineers to the approved engineering list. And that's going to go over to Mr. Dean for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are two different engineering firms that have submitted their qualifications, reviewed by staff. Requesting motion to approve both to be added to our approved engineers list.
Motion to approve Flora Rural Water Association and Master Consulting Engineers to the approved list of engineers for the twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two fiscal year.
Second. Sir, do you need for any discussion? Any questions from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six is a surplus of a vector truck. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Dean for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We now have our new vector truck in service. The vector truck is no longer of need to us. Does likely have some marginal resale value, like your authorization to surplus it by public auction.
Motion to approve the vector truck as surplus property.
I was like going to, uh, for this discussion, give me a discussion.
Absolutely. Welcome for discussion.
Is there any reason why we should get rid of it? Or is there a possibility to keep it as a, in city as surplus for those emergencies that may?
I believe it's still sitting in the shop pending a significant repair.
Get rid of it?
It's basically scrap. The strolling engine is in need of significant and expensive repair. There's just no value as a vector truck unless you want to spend six figures. Which I would not recommend.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to the discussion on cancellation of December. It's typed to the twenty-seventh, which is, I believe, a Monday, the twenty-eighth. I think it's just a Scrivener's error. So just to correct the record, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth would be the meeting, twenty-twenty-one. I'm going to open that up for motion and or. And or discussion.
We do this every year. Motion to approve the cancellation of December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to all business. I'm going to start with, to my right, with Councilman Cincella.
The lift stations. Again, that's been a hot item. And do we have a plan right now moving forward? Earlier you said some things we're going to do, but is there anything that we could really start moving forward on?
I think the next step is, there's no completed funding. The next crux of the issue is funding. And we've got some discussions to have about ARCA funds and whether you want to spend ARCA funds on lift stations or look at other funding. But that's the, that's the next part of the conversation. Like, staff has done a very good job of laying out the components priority. I've got that document ready to go. It's time to wrestle with how do you want to fund them.
And the next question I was going to ask is, is the priority, you know, which ones we need to tackle before.
Staff has identified red, yellow, green and put indicators on each lift station. You'll have that in front of you when we're ready to talk about the funding and prioritization. Now, staff has a good idea of which ones we need to address today and which ones have another five years, ten years anticipated. So I'll be able to business.
I have one question on the PBA contract. Apparently there's two parts. One says that they had to, if they had a vehicle, they had to be within twenty-five miles. And then it's another section that had to be within twenty-five minutes of driving time. You can get that clarified at some point.
Well, it's, Rachel, it's the exact same contract as last year, right? So if it was this, if it says that, it said it last year.
Yeah.
But it.
Maybe going forward, clarify.
No, no, let's. You can't clarify now.
So what section are you talking about? I'm, I'm looking for it now. I don't know what I'm talking about.
The, the way that I read it, because I read the same thing. It looked like one was for the proximity in which they, they had to live in terms of, I think, mileage. And one had the time in terms of drive time. So they were.
And one, I think, has to do with when they're covering over. Do you know what topic that is? What is it? I've read the same thing. I'm the same as I was. I mean, I could check it. I saw.
Going for, I mean, obviously this is.
I'll, I'll, I'll check it out for next week. You had emailed it. It wasn't due. It's in there twenty-five miles minutes. I'll check it out.
Yeah, it's twenty-five miles in like thirty minutes or it's two different, you know. Values for it. I'm like, well, you know, thirty minutes could be five miles away, so.
But one talks about where they reside and one talks about taking the car too. So they're talking about.
Yeah, there's probably, it's probably negotiable. I'll let you know.
Because I saw them as different issues when I read it.
And then that's where I was getting confusing. But if they're, then which takes precedent, where I reside or where I have the car? Do I take the car? And everyone takes the car, so.
It may be for different reasons, depending on where it is in the country. I'll check it out.
That's all I.
Thank you. I have no old business.
I have no old business.
For motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.